Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for the 21st, 2023. If you can, please stand and say pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We first have our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And it looks like we're going to have to go right away to a adjournment or recess.
I'll move to recess.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And we will start our Economic Development Authority meeting. We need our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda either.
I'll move the agenda. Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And minutes for October 10th.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. All right. Good morning.
How's everybody today?
Yeah.
Good to see y'all.
In full force today.
Yeah.
No one's outnumbered us today.
Brought you new people to introduce you to us.
That's good. Go ahead.
So we want to start out first by bringing to you the Minnesota Cities Participation Program through Minnesota Housing. And that program is a key program to homeownership in our community for low-income families. And you can see in the agenda packet over the last five or six years, the annual homeownership numbers that we've been serving in our community. And you can see 2019 was our high with 67 households. And since then, we've been struggling to catch up to that 67. So this year, right now, we're at 22. And what this program is, the state of Minnesota actually does the bonding for Blue Earth County and the communities in Blue Earth County so that you don't have to go through that process. They also administer that program. So there really is, there's no fees for the program, no administration. They work directly with the local lenders, so it's a really good program. And so this year, we just ask you to approve the application and grant agreement, and we submit that in on January 2nd.
I'll move approval.
Now, second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Great program.
Yep.
Very good. And then we have the 302 Lincoln Street, Maple.
Can I have Jim Tajee here again today to go through that? And he has also brought his facilities supervisor, Luke Peterson. All right, I'm going to present that section.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. So today, we have Luke Peterson. He's our facility supervisor. He's going to walk you through the bid consideration for 302 Lincoln Street in Mapleton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair and members of the board, I'm here to present the resolution considering bids for 302 Lincoln Street renovation in Mapleton, Minnesota. Unfortunately, we only received one bid on the project and the contractor did not submit the required submittals also. At this time, we are recommending rejecting the bid and re-advertising the project with additional solicitation to local contractors.
All right. I will move approval of the objection of the bid.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Well, that was quick. All right.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the EVA meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. We'll get back to our agenda. Property Environmental Resources.
Gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. First, the next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action item. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. And the county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you use the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks or repetitive are not relevant to the matter under the consideration by the board. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the item before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott Salisbury, Property Environmental Resources. The first item on the agenda is PC 37-23. The applicant is Custom Craft Homes LLC. The request is to vacate the utility easements on lots 8, 9, and 10 of Block 1 of Johnson, Montgomery Pleasant View Estates. The property is owned real townsite and is located within the urban fringe overlay district of Mankato in the northwest quarter of Section 22, South Bend Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. The applicant was not represented, and there is no comment from the public on the request. The planning commissions had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. And following that, the planning commission voted by roll call vote unanimously to forward the recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action is passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 37-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 37-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 37-23? And for the last time, is anyone wishing to comment on PC 37-23? If not, we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval of the resolution based on the recommendation by the planning commission.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. Could you please read PC 36-23?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, Property and Land Supervisor. PC 36-23 is a request from Blue Earth County for an ordinance amendment to Chapter 20, Land Division, Article 3 and 4. The amendment updates the conditions for when a subdivision plat is required, the standards for minor subdivisions, and parkland dedication. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report, and there was no public comment, and the planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission by roll call vote voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action this morning for this item is adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 36-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 36-23? Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 36-23? For the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 36-23? If not, we'll close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board?
Nope, we heard about this at a work session, appreciated the information. Planning and zoning was comfortable with the language change also. Spent quite a bit of time on it, so I appreciate the work by staff. With that, I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. The motion carries. The next item for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of housekeeping items here this morning. And first, we'll begin with the planning commission's review of the bylaws. As required in the planning commission bylaws, they are to be reviewed annually by the planning commission. The Blue Earth County Commission adopted those bylaws on November 17th of 2020. And Article 5 of the bylaws specifies the amendment process and the review process. At the November 1st, 2023, planning commission meeting, staff presented the bylaws for review. Following the presentation, the planning commission discussed amending the bylaws to include Minnesota, the Minnesota statute requiring that all appointed government officials take an oath of office. And that is included into the amendment. The planning commission members found no other adjustments were necessary to the bylaws and recommended amending the bylaws to include the oath of office to the county board for approval. So the board action this morning for this item would be adoption of the amended bylaws based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would move the bylaws as amended.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes. And this concludes the planning and zoning.
We've got terms yet.
We've got terms yet.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our other housekeeping item here this morning is reappointments. Members of both the planning commission and the board of adjustment are appointed by the county board of commissioners on staggered three-year terms. The planning commission is a committee of seven members, while the board of adjustment is a committee of five members. The bylaws of each committee were updated in 2020 and addressed membership. The bylaws outline three-year terms for each committee. This year, two members that serve on the planning commission and one member on the board of adjustment have expiring terms. Mr. Kurt Anderson and Mr. Michael Dusty Riley have served on the planning commission since 2001 and 2021 respectively. Mr. Anderson and Mr. Riley have indicated their desire to continue serving on the committee. If the board elects to reappoint Mr. Anderson and Mr. Riley, their terms will be January 1, 2024, through December 31st of 2026. And that is the planning commission. And then for the board of adjustment, Mr. Kurt Anderson has served on the board of adjustment since 2001. Mr. Anderson has indicated his desire to continue serving on the committee. If the board elects to reappoint Mr. Anderson, his term will be January 1 of 2024 through December 31st of 2026. And staff requests the board to reappoint the planning commission and board of adjustment members as outlined above in the staff memo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion?
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Both those gentlemen do a great job, and attendance has been very good at planning and zoning and board of adjustments, so.
I think it's something to pat these folks on the back for doing this kind of work for that many years.
Yeah.
And helping, helping the public out. It's amazing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. And that concludes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
All right. Yeah, we'll get Ryan to come up here.
Good morning, Ryan Craig.
Good morning. Go ahead.
All right, so we'll start us out with Joint County Ditch, Joint County Ditch 83, which is shared with Wasika County. Just a quick repair report, but I'll give a memo on the background here. Joint County Ditch 83 is a joint public drainage system shared with Wasika County. The Joint Drainage Authority recently updated a new Joint Drainage Authority Resolution, 2022 through 46. The resolution states joint drainage approval is not required if each single repair occurrence does not exceed $50,000 and is under a combined total of less than $100,000 per ditch per calendar year. Currently, Blue Earth County's individual drainage repair policy, state drainage authority approval is required if the repair exceeds the 15,000. Today, we are asking respectfully at the board to approve the repairs of Joint County Ditch 83 in the amount of $21,000, excuse me, $21,735. And that is all I have.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes. Ditch 20.
Yeah, next item is regarding judicial ditch 20. The Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch 20 watershed is approximately 2,300 acres in size and located in Libra Township. A landowner meeting was held on November 13th, 2023 to discuss potential repairs or improvements. It was agreed that the current benefits listing was out of date, and a redetermination of benefits is necessary before moving forward with repairs or improvements. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint viewers to complete a redetermination of benefits for JD or judicial ditch 20.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And we'll jump into finance. Lisa?
Morning, Lisa.
Morning, Lisa.
Good morning. I have several items for you today. The first one is to enter into a statement of work for Audit Services for the year end December 31st, 2023 with Clifton Larson Allen. This will be our fifth year, and we are very happy working with them. They do a great job.
All right.
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. Go ahead.
The second item is annually, I need your approval to authorize the finance director and assistant finance director to make electronic fund transfers. That is the state statute that we bring us to the board annually.
I'll move it.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Go ahead.
Thank you. The last item is we updated the Blue Earth County capital asset policy. We had a new accounting standard for SPITAS, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is why they've abbreviated it. So that's a new standard that we're implementing where we will now be capitalizing software subscriptions, like Microsoft is an example, and some other IT subscription arrangements. So we added, last year, we added the right to use assets for leases, which was Gatsby Statement 97. This year, we added Gatsby Statement 96 to that policy. And also included a threshold where we will only be capitalizing 50,000 arrangements that cost total for over the year of the term, 50,000 or more.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. We'll call our sheriff up in front here.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
So I'm here to get approval on the grant agreement that Blue Earth County Jail competed in a request for proposal for, from the Minnesota Department of Health in the amount of $68,650. And this is inmate tracking equipment. So basically, all the inmates would have a wristband that we can track the medication they're taking, make sure there's no mistakes made, electronic health records, and then there are some money in there for new mattresses. Again, all basically COVID money is left over COVID money in this grant.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just got a question. So Sheriff, the tracker, if you have medication, it would only be on the inmates that have medication, or is this a tracker that would be on everybody?
No, it's on everybody.
It is?
It's on everyone. That way, you know you're dealing with the person. There's no mistakes of what inmate you have there for any needs, any, you know, so you're not releasing the wrong person. It's all tracked electronically. Any contact the custody officer has with the inmate, that's all tracked.
That's just a bracelet that they wear then with a code on it?
Correct.
This is a little off the subject, but how is our nursing schedule working?
It's doing, it's great.
Is it?
A hundred percent.
On the subject, but you're here, I thought it asked.
Definitely, you can, we are noticing a huge improvement.
And the custody officers won't have to deal with it as much.
Exactly.
Perfect. That's all I had.
Well, this is great. Finally, I get to sign this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. I'm sorry. All right. And then Mr. Waller.
Good morning, Eric.
Hey, Eric.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am here today to request your approval on our emergency operations plan. We did talk about it last week at the workshop. This, the changes in that really kind of reflect things to responsible individuals, things like that. All of this is in compliance with our Homeland Security Emergency Management requirements and the grant that we get. Given the size of the document, it's available for review at our office if needed. And so I'm seeking approval, and you should have a resolution today for that.
Let's make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, just thank you for all your work on that. That was nice to see that get condensed.
We're starting.
For first, for you guys. Doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me at the end of the day, but, no, it was good to see that. And then how you separated out the names and the resources. I think that just makes a lot of sense. It doesn't make sense to have that in the policy portion. So that's all you got done. It's an amazing task. So thank you for that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Have a good Thanksgiving, guys.
Mr. Tilges.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me your minutes to bring a few time-sensitive items forward for your consideration. Today, I have two resolutions of support for local road improvement program grant applications, the first being for county-stated Highway 82, Victory Drive, from 522 feet south of Hoffman Road to 389 feet north of Marwood Drive in the city of Mankato. This is for application of $1.5 million of local road improvement program state dollars towards the reconstruction of the project we have planned in 2024. This included resolution is necessary as part of the grant application. I would request approval of this resolution.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Well-needed, but sure is going to cause some hassle. Area of the neighborhood there for a couple of years, but man, I tell you, we're happy.
And you just got done with the project. You can't get a break, can you, Patty?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
All right, thank you. The second resolution included in your packet is a resolution of support for the city of Pemberton's application for $1.5 million of local road improvement program grant funding for, toward the reconstruction of county-stated Highway 53, which is Main Street through Pemberton. City approached the county, and will have interest in doing this. This would be the first step in project funding for the city. They would seek other additional funding to help with their city utility replacement costs. So this is being initiated by the city. However, the county would have to act. If this were awarded, the county would have to act as the contracting agency and the administrator of these funds. We would likely contract with the city for their consultant engineer to do the contract administration, construction, inspection, et cetera. Very similar to what we did with Mapleton a few years ago, and they were fortunate enough to have been selected as a recipient of elder dollars to reconstruct for our great street. So I would recommend approval of the resolution for CASA 53 in the city of Pemberton.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are due on early December, so I wouldn't give them to you until, well.
Thanks, Ryan. See you tonight.
All right. Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have a number of action items to start with, and then a couple of pretty straightforward informational items as well. Regarding action items, first, show the family services in your packet. First item under that is Greater Minnesota Family Group Decision Making. I don't know how much we've talked about this, but I think it's a really essential part of what we do in child protection. It's offered to children's mental health and juvenile corrections as well. But it really is getting family members together with natural supports, trying to wrap around the person who's at risk and saying, what are the assets that we have as far as planning for a permanent solution, placements if necessary, safety planning, and then just that day-to-day support as well. There's a base charge for this process of $1,380, and then there are add-ons if it gets more involved or there's multiple sessions required. The term, January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '24. And in child support, we have our cooperative agreement. This agreement does not have any funds attached to it, but it is required to have this in place every quarter that we do child support services. It also outlines our responsibilities and DHS's responsibilities. It is a renewal agreement, and the term is January 1st of '24 through December 1st of '25. Financial assistance, a couple of items. First of those being our agreement with MRCI for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, and specific to that regarding employment and training. And so we help people find and retain employment so they can be self-sufficient. It's part of our mission. There's no change to the grant amount, and we receive $5,660 for this, plus a $770 piece that goes directly for child support or employment and training. The term, October 1st of '23 through September 30th of '24. And then also, under financial assistance, MFIP and DWP. MFIP stands for Minnesota Family Investment Program, and DWP is Diversionary Work Program. These are both cash programs. And we offer practical supports such as gas cards for transportation to work, resources for purchasing clothing for interviewing, and insurance for a vehicle, and then possibly some money to repair said vehicle as well if it's about getting to work. The amendment is for $20,000 of additional funding for client utilization, and the term, October 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. Next section, community-based services. I'm going to take the first two items together. Board's okay with that. First, Brown County. First, Brown County, which is our primary source for detox, and Brown County Evaluation Center has member counties, which we are one of those. We agree to have them be our first call of contact if they have that available, and their per diem rate for this next year went from four hundred and sixty dollars to four seventy-one. And the term of January first of twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty-four. The second detox contract is with New Life Detox. We have a couple of these, but this one is in Woodstock, Minnesota. It's only when we don't have detox beds available at Brown County. Their rate is four hundred and fifty dollars, excuse me, per day. If they're, if we have a contract with them, and if we don't, it's five hundred and fifty dollars a day, so we have that interest in contracting. No change to the rates for their service, and the term January first of twenty-three through December thirty-first of twenty-three. And then also under community-based services is Woodland Centers. In this regard, Woodland Centers provides us an adult crisis service stabilization, and we are outside their catchment area, but they are willing to contract with us for these acute short-term stabilization services in a residential setting. These are kids that do not meet hospital-level care, and they're also not stable enough to return home. There's only two providers that do this service in Minnesota right now. Our region is looking at this type of service for expansion because it's such a need, and it could prevent these out-of-state placements and more high-end placements that we're experiencing. Their per diem increased from six hundred and sixty dollars a day to six seventy-five, and there's also a three thousand dollar kind of retainer fee, administrative fee, that we pay annually. Term January first of twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty-four. And the last section of the action items, with one item, public health, Minnesota Department of Health Child and Teen Checkup. Our staff in public health do outreach to children from the time they're born through age twenty who are in medical assistance. There's practical things that we offer if their language is barrier, so if English is not their primary language, transportation to appointments or other barriers like that, we try to improve access to both primary health and dental care. The funding for twenty-four is at seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, which is a thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollar decrease. This is the second year this has happened, and the reason is that the first year, Mankato Clinic opted to manage their own child and teen checkup within their clinic, which is certainly fine. And then this year, Mayo is doing the same where they're going to manage it within their clinic. The funding is based on twenty-six dollars and fifty cents per eligible child, so that's why the decrease is that it's getting farmed out to the clinics as well as for what we have left over. And the term January first of twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty-four. And that is what I have for action items today, Mr. Chair.
So we can move them all in one?
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Interesting talking about the detox center. Do you know off the top of your head how much that would cost if you did not have a contract?
So if we did not have a contract with Brown County, you're saying?
Right.
I do not off the top of my head, but I think it's significantly more.
Like two thousand dollars or something like that?
Yeah, it's, and there's other detox facilities that we've used in the past for backup that have those kind of outrages per diems.
And these are, these are contract rates when we use them, right?
Correct, so it is a per diem fee. Usually it's two days that people are held in detox, and it's when we use them. And then you guys all know that the detox situation is that it's our own people or people that are in our community, so as, as we have people that come through during the year, if they get picked up here.
Somebody picked up here in Mankato and Blue Earth County?
Which is unusual. It's one of the only places where we pay that way, yeah.
Understand. Okay. Any other discussion?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I have a couple of data sets for you. There are some talking points that I include in the packet that I won't read to you. The middle of that page, though, there's a bullet that says a couple of large initiatives coming in twenty-four, online portal, which allows new providers to apply electronically, which should help us with workflow. And then abbreviated licensing inspections. If somebody has a really good track record, we kind of cut down the areas we're looking at, at a given time, and can do a lot of that in a kind of hurried-up kind of fashion that still covers the bases to make sure everything's good within those facilities. The chart, which captures both licensed family daycare, and then the second set of arrows is licensed child foster care. You'll see the new homes that we did increase, you know, somewhat from twenty-two to twenty-three. I always put on my salesman hat just that we're looking for daycare facilities. I think everyone knows it's a pretty hot topic in, in almost every community. We're not an exception. And then the total number of daycare at homes though actually decreased, and that's what we're concerned about. You look back a few years and you see a much larger number, so we're very concerned about that, and the incentives to provide this care, which obviously isn't an easy mission, but it's a very critical mission for our community. Same with child foster care, same plug, that we need more foster care facilities. These newly licensed one in sixteen, uh, in twenty-three, I'm sorry, so far has been sixteen. You'll see the bubble down in the lower-left corner, that year-to-date, we had twenty-three referrals, so sixteen have been processed so far, which is a good number. And then the final arrow in the right corner, total number of child foster care homes at sixty-four, which, you know, if you look over time, it's probably somewhat in an average level, but we could always use a lot more of those. You'll see the bubble that twenty homes are relative foster care, which we prefer to use relatives, but as you can imagine, they're usually in it just for that situation, and so there's a lot of churn and a lot of work that goes with that over time. And then the final slide is our printout of kind of year-to-date for childcare assistance program. You'll see the columns going down, and the highlights from me are the monthly number of eligible families. You look down the column, it started at ninety-five and we're at a hundred and two. And then skipping over a couple of columns, it says monthly actual expenditure, you know, right around that seventy, high seventies to eighty thousand dollars a month for those families. And the average cost per family is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred dollars per month. The rollups at the bottom are probably most significant, that our allocation for Blue Earth County is a million and one, and our actual to-date is seven hundred and forty-three thousand, and our projection would be just short of nine hundred thousand, so not spending our full allocation. And looking at about eighty percent, seventy-eight percent. Last year was eighty-three percent that we spent out, and prior years, we've had not only a hundred percent spend out, but waiting lists and all kinds of things. So things have changed. There are enough resources at this point to churn through the need. We're very glad when there's not a waiting list to me. That, that's a really hard reality, if somebody, let's say, is offered a job and cannot pull up the boat to have their children in childcare. It's, it's a big wall to, to get over, so. That's what I had for you all today.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks Bill.
Good to see you all.
Thanks Bill, have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, same to you. And we'll come to administration, Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for November seventh.
So.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Except to thank Kevin Papp for taking my place on that date, thank you very much. I watched it, so you did an awesome job. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? And then we got the bills for the week, so November second through the eighth, and November ninth through fifteen.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number thirteen in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today, starting with a voluntary demotion of a human service supervisor to a public health specialist. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that supervisor position in our mental health area. We filled a social worker in our children's mental health area. We also had a candidate withdraw, a job acceptance in our eligibility area in human services, so we'll go back to the drawing board there. We did also have a resignation of a maintenance technician, one, in our public works area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we had a resignation of an appraiser in our property environmental resources department, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. And then we had an increase in hours of a senior account clerk in our finance and license center from a part-time to a full-time position, and so that completes all the HR items. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On item A, Bob, let's not be understanding what this is saying, but it's a voluntary demotion, but the salary goes up.
Got to get on staff.
Lot of conversation about that, but that is our policy, that when a demotion is either initiated or approved, they're put on the scale at the new grade level, and we always try and get them on a step. And so when they fall between steps, our policy has been they go to the next highest step. Now, the key to remember is that it resets their anniversary date, so in this particular case, this individual was due for a step increase on January first. It'll now be November before another. So, you know, some of it's timing, some of it's, we don't see very many voluntary demotions.
And you won't top all the time?
Right.
Yes. Because you're on a different. Great, okay. Thank you.
It was, like I say, it did receive a lot of conversation in the office, but that's the way the language is currently written.
Our financial status report?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, at number fourteen is the financial status report. Through October thirty-first, you'll see our total revenue is just under eighty million against total expenditures of just under eighty-eight million. So we're at that point, another point in the year where our revenue is less than our expenditures as we wait for those second half taxes to be received in. Couple of things to draw note to is our total expenditures are at sixty-seven percent of our target, when we should be at about eighty-three percent. Our revenue, if I said that incorrectly. Expenses are at seventy-four percent of our anticipated budget, so both revenue and expenses are lagging a little behind kind of our anticipated budget targets. We continue to see strong revenue on our transportation sales tax and interest on investments. On the expenditure side, things are running pretty much as expected with maybe the exception of that public aid assistance where we're at ninety-five percent of the budget, but everything else seems to be pretty close to our budget. Terms of the enterprise fund, which is our ponderosa landfill, you'll see that the total revenue is four point two million, expenditures there are three point three million. Even with some cell development, we still are performing very well compared revenues to expenditures there. The second page, the cash investment balances, you'll see towards the top, the total available funds are fifty-three point three million compared to a target of fifty-eight point six. So again, as we're waiting for those second half taxes, and we dip a little bit below that six-month target. Closer to the bottom, the total county funds, it had a hundred and eighteen point four million compared to a hundred and sixteen point four million last year. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have. I know I ran through things relatively quickly, but if there's anything that stands out to the board, I'd be happy to try and answer those questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our total dedicated funds, Bob, looks like we've been constantly kind of going up a little bit, but we did go down five million in the last year.
You know, some of that is the ARPA fund. If you look towards the middle of the page, this time last year, we had eleven point three million. As we've spent those funds, we're now down to five point eight, and those will continue to decrease. That's the major difference between those two years.
We get the money in one year and we spend it another year. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we will go to our commissioner reports. Uh, Mark?
I didn't have too much. See, after meeting November seventh at Blue Earth County with the state health partnership meeting, and then on November eighth, to have a Rita meeting, it was advisory committee, Bob, we were there for that. And then November fourteenth, had the, our board work session and the county tour, road tour.
What's my name, Mr. Chair? Okay.
After our last board meeting, as already mentioned, the county board work session, and then our county road tour, and thank you to Ryan and his staff for putting that together. Nice to go out and see all the projects that they managed to get done throughout the year. Then I had my regional radio board, the sheriff and Eric Goldwell over there, which we had a very spirited discussion about some of the stuff going on with the state and the grant funding, and we're getting kind of crossways with the SECB, but I think it's in, I think we need to figure this out, because in the past, we have been the fiscal agent for all the grants that come to the cell central area, and as the sheriff was looking at it and recommendations from the sheriff, we decided not to be the fiscal agent for it because of the risk and the auditing challenges and, and the money that the actual Blue Earth County gets at the end of the day isn't a whole lot of money. So we asked the SECB if we could let each county apply on their own, and they basically said no, we're going to make it be just regional grant awards. And then as Eric and the sheriff dug into it, it's like that can come right directly to the counties, and so we're trying to get that sorted out. The amount that gets granted to the whole entire region is, is, by the time you split it up, it's not a lot of money, but for some of the smaller counties, and even our county, that extra money is certainly helpful. So I appreciate the sheriff and Eric's work on that, trying to get that sorted out, but we're working the right direction and hoping we can get something done so that we don't have to have that as a problem, as us being the fiscal agent and then doling out the money just makes things a little easier for us. And then we had our cell central EMS, we had our audit, everything's going really well there. Had that in the afternoon. Not a whole lot to add there. Kevin and I were extension that night, got the reports from the staff there, did the reviews, went to go over them with Josh. And that brings me to today, Mr. Chair.
Kevin?
Since our November seventh board meeting on the eighth, was an AMC drainage work holders, stakeholders called, SWCD on the ninth, on the thirteenth, we had two landowner drainage meetings, JD twenty, CD seventy-nine, also a NACO ag policy leadership call that day. On the fourteenth, attended the GNG banquet. On the sixteenth was the Bowser Drainage Work Group on U of M Extension, as Kip has mentioned. Then yesterday, the NACO EMS Work Group had a call. Actually includes my report.
Thank you. Patty?
Okay, November thirteenth, I had my NACO FICA meeting.
Okay, November 13th, I had my NACO FICA meeting, the work session on the 14th, the road tour, and the GMG business awards, which was packed.
Was it?
Yeah, it was. Jesse did a great job. Community Ed on the 15th, and Friends of the Library on the Saturday, the 18th. That ends my report.
All right. For myself, on November 9th, Transportation Alliance Annual Meeting was held here in Mankato at the historic Mankato Lodge in the Sonic Temple. After that meeting, I had a library board meeting, and then I drove up to Plymouth for Highway 169 Corridor Coalition Fall Meeting, a full day that day. On the 13th, I had a detox board meeting in the wall. On the 14th, we had our work session. I had a Highway 169 corridor meeting. I had, let's see, on the 16th, I had a Traverse de Sioux Board Meeting, Rural Action Caucus Zoom. And let's see here. That brings me up to today. So then a motion to recess?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same. Thank you very much.